Good evening. Welcome to our June 4th Board of Education meeting. Can we have a roll call, please?
Sandra Bradford.
Here.
Barry Altshuler.
Here.
Leah Collister-Lazare.
Here.
Katie Herem.
Here.
Erin Shandine.
Here.
Steve Wang.
Here.
Diana Clapton.
Here.
Could you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? The pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. We have some recognitions that I'd like to turn over right away to Dr. Winkelman so we can hear from some special students.
Thank you, Sandra. Even though we're in summertime, we're continuing our tradition of having students involved in our board meeting. And so we have two of our athletes here today. And I see a bunch of our male and female track coaches in the back, but I think I'm turning it over to Ryan, our athletic director.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you again for allowing me to come up here again and introduce to you two of our star athletes from the spring. We had a great spring again with all of our spring sports. And in particular, the two individuals that you're about to meet accomplished something that very few accomplish. So without further ado, I'll just introduce who I have up here with me. Coach Deborah Volta, one of our girls' track coaches, our head coach Kayla Pennev, and our head boys' coach Todd Koklinski. So it is my pleasure to introduce you. I'll go in order here. First is Mia Soroy. Mia's a freshman. Mia, come on up. So Mia won the 3200 meter race down at State a couple of weeks ago with a PR of 101929, which in itself is awesome. But the bigger stat to me is that she finished nearly 15 seconds faster than the person who finished in second place. So it's unbelievable feat for her, especially as a freshman. And we're just super proud of her. So congratulations, Mia. And second, Joe Bergenzler, come on up. Joe is a junior. Joe just finished up his junior year. And in the exact same race, the 3200 meter, Joe finished with his PR of 858.1, which was two and a half seconds faster than the person that finished in second place. So again, really, really proud of their accomplishments. And you know, I talk with them all the time about how they represent themselves both in and out of the building. And I think you have two of the finest in front of you today that represent Barrington High School and the Barrington community in such a positive way. So thank you for allowing me to introduce you to them tonight and celebrate their accomplishments.
Thank you.
Thank you, coaches. Thank you, parents.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, congratulations. My fellow board members know that I run a lot, but I could only manage about a mile and a half in the time when the two of you did two miles. So my question as a fellow runner is what's your secret to holding your pace over those 3200 meters? Is it intervals, hillwork, mental strength? Like, what tips do you have?
Just keep running?
Yeah, Coach Douglas has really prepared. We do a lot of good workouts. And racing throughout the season really helps you get your endurance. And then we start to focus on speed. So yeah, getting those workouts in.
Awesome. Congratulations.
Were they both school records too?
Yes.
Yes.
And state records, right? Did I hear that right?
No, not state records. But Mia's school record, conference record, our stadium record, and sectional record.
Wow. And Joe, we get you for at least another year for cross country, right? And Mia, you're three more years? Is that right? That's amazing.
Just take care of your legs.
And while we're doing it, coming around, parents, do you have any comments or anything you'd like to say?
Yeah, thanks for all the support. I just think we love this community. And yeah, I pushed Mia and a little jogger all through Barrington. I've been here 15 years. So yeah, this is great.
So she learned at a young age.
Excellent. Let's see how fast we can move.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Scrunch.
Two, here we go. Ready? One, two, three. Couple more. Ready? One, two, three. Thank you, guys.
Okay, ready? One, two, three. Awesome. Okay.
Wait, one more.
One more.
Okay, one, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Good to see you.
Evening. Yeah, have a good evening.
Erin.
Erin.
Erin. All right. That's okay. That was great. I mean, so next up is my report. And I just thank you again to Joe Bergenzler and to Mia Soroy. What excellent examples of empowering personal excellence in every learner, and in this case, exceptional excellence to be state champions. A couple of things. Do we have a photo?
Yeah, just know when you'll be ready.
Okay, I'm ready for a photo. Yeah. So I wanted to just highlight some things that occurred since the last board meeting. The board volunteered.
That's not a great picture.
Okay. Well, we had great fun. We weren't going for photographs, but the board attended the incubator open house and pitch night. And we all helped prepare the food and pass out our dirks during that event. And it was great fun. And thanks to the board for volunteering more time to attend that event and help the students and the parents. The advisory, reference advisory committee also met, since we've met last. We'll hear their update tonight. Board, thank you also because everybody has turned in their IASB board governance information. And thanks for putting all that information together. And thank you ahead of time, Erin, if you're going to pull all that information together for us as we may submit to be recognized for our board governance. The board met just before this. We had a self-evaluation. We reviewed our norms and communications expectations for each other. And I think in the summer, we're going to have an upcoming board topic around our agenda and the timing for the meeting. As some of you may know, we changed our start time of this meeting several months ago. And so we're going to review that again after Dr. Winkelman has a chance to talk to his staff about it. So pay attention for that. I want to also recognize graduation. Congratulations again to the class of 2024. And thank you to the board. We had 100% board attendance, which I don't think I've ever seen in the past. So thank you very much for that. I feel like that our graduation ceremony is really second to none. Each year, Barrington High School strives to provide a positive and meaningful graduation event for all students. Our high school graduation ceremony is a celebratory occasion for our students and their accomplishments. We are saddened and we are regretful that all did not share in a positive experience at the recent ceremony. High school graduation represents the culmination of a student's academic education. Each graduating senior should have the opportunity to be individually celebrated without disruption from others. That is why the district takes seriously the guidelines for student conduct at graduation and seeks to address any behavior, regardless of the conduct and the content. That draws inappropriate attention away from other students or otherwise detracts from the dignity of the graduation ceremony. In addition, as we prepare for future events, school events and ceremonies, the board has asked the administration to review our current practices and identify opportunities to implement measures to ensure respectful environment for everyone. We are committed to continuing Barrington High School traditions that uplift our students and encourage each student in their future endeavors and successes. Board, I want to remind you that triple I has opened for registration. So please let Janine know if you want to sign up for any workshops and if you want to reserve any rooms. That's coming up in November. And also, board, stay tuned for more opportunities to volunteer. There'll be another planting day, maybe this Saturday, we're not sure, but we'll let you know. We'll send an email. If you're able to attend and help plant this Saturday, that would be great.
I think we're planting on Saturday, 9 to 11, weather permitting.
Yep.
An email will come out.
We'll send an email. Let everybody know. Thanks. All right. So with that, next up is public comment. We've come to the portion of our meeting set aside for public comment. The board values your thoughts and opinions. We will ensure all voices are respected and heard in accordance with the board equity statement that states, "We recognize, embrace, and defend the identities, abilities, and voices of our diverse school community." The board has agreed to the rules set forth in our policies in which public commenters have agreed to abide as they've signed up. We will enforce those rules as needed. This is a board meeting that occurs in public. This is not a public meeting. Public comment is not a conversation and does not necessarily reflect the views of the board. If any comments require further follow-up and further attention, we'll ask Dr. Winkelman to follow up and report back to the board. So with that, I do have several people signed up. Michael Rothman. We'll give you a few minutes.
My name is Michael Rothman. And I'm here because I understood there was a call to action to criticize the principal's email about what happened regarding graduation. I am a parent of four children who went through Barrington, two had a great graduation ceremonies, and one who suffered through the last one. Before it started, I saw a family in the audience take out a Palestinian flag and knew that students would probably do so on stage. The students were warned not to bring anything else on stage other than what was approved. No air horns, no props, no flags, nothing that would distract from the pomp and circumstance of the festive evening. That includes anything that was likely to be substantially disruptive and inflame tensions or cause students and the audience to become upset. The rules for graduation applied to all, no matter race, gender, or religion. The rules were viewpoint neutral. Under the First Amendment law, schools cannot restrict speech that substantially disrupt school activities. Schools can institute dress codes as long as they are unrelated to specific viewpoints that students wish to express. Contrary to what the students are saying, whether it's in high school or on college campuses, free speech doesn't mean the students can do whatever they want in school. Despite being warned, the students, with it seems the blessing of parents in the audience with the flags, they flaunted the rules and brought the flags on stage. They made Jewish and non-Jewish students and parents uneasy. I believe much of the booing occurred because they were disrupting the events by bringing politics into the event. After graduation, the school sent a non-political memo as to why the students who did this violated the rules. Actions have consequences, and that is a life lesson that kids in general these days don't get. I believe many disagreed with the students' position and let students know by booing. Incredibly, some of the parents of the kids who brought the flags up want the school to apologize and punish those who booed. Really? If this is free speech and you claim the right to do whatever you want, whenever you want, can you honestly argue that the audience had no right to boo? You cannot have free speech and stuff one person's viewpoint down the throat of a captive audience and then complain and demand apologies when the response is contrary to your views. Free speech is about airing people's ideas in public discourse. If you believe you had the right to brandish a flag, others had the right to express their opposition. But as I stated, there's a time and place for protest, and that was not it. I was told a student was fined for wearing a Spider-Man mask a few years ago, which is not the cause of disruption that occurred this time. The students should face consequences for disregarding the rules. Otherwise, what's going to happen next year? The same consequences should apply if it was an Israeli flag, Ukrainian, Russian, Indian, pride, or any other flag. I also suggest next year the school increase its lesson in what it means to the school center. If many students have it's clear they don't understand.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up is Marsha McClary. Give Michael a few extra seconds.
Hello, my name is Marsha McClary. I live in Barrington, have five children, and two of which have gone through a wonderful graduation ceremony and the rules talk last year. And I've been to many of the Barrington High School graduations. Incredible ceremonies. Honestly, like second to none, done very well. And after this one, again, similar to the last gentleman, I felt, you know, that it took away from the ceremony, the displays with the extra flags and things like that. And I commend the school district for addressing that in a respectful way. And I suggest, you know, next year, just to make sure that if it happens in the ceremony, perhaps address it at the ceremony, and it would have ended also the booing and that from the audience. But again, it's such a great community, and the ceremonies are great. And can you imagine if we don't address it and it wasn't addressed that, what would happen next year? And there would just be increased displays and distraction from what's the real intention of the ceremony? Thank you so much for everything you guys do.
Thank you. Next up is Sarah Abunaser. Did I pronounce that correctly, Sarah?
Yes, I will also. Abunaser.
You don't have to pull it forward. It'll pick you up.
Hello, my name is Sarah Abunaser. I am a Palestinian-American that graduated Barrington High School with the class of 2022. I attended my brother, Abdul Qader Abunaser's graduation last May, and was disgusted by the inappropriate actions, disruptive comments, and racist remarks made by both the audience and the students. I was extremely disappointed and offended to read Principal McWilliams's discriminatory email specifically targeting pro-Palestinians for their actions. While it is his opinion that raising a flag is disruptive, inappropriate, and undignified, it was a clear show of racism to completely ignore behaviors the audience and students exhibited that were truly inappropriate and disruptive. I would like to take a moment to clearly present the discriminatory behavior of Principal McWilliams. At the graduation rehearsal, Principal McWilliams explicitly stated that students should not bring beach balls. However, students were seen passing a beach ball around during the ceremony. In the email sent prior to graduation, it explicitly states, "Do not bring noise makers or horns to the ceremony." However, students and audience members were heard blowing air horns throughout the ceremony. As a 2022 graduate, I received a similar, if not the exact, email before my graduation stating not to engage in disruptive or inappropriate behavior. However, a student wore a Spider-Man mask as he walked across the stage. Principal McWilliams did not address this publicly in an email. So I would like to ask you, Principal McWilliams, why did you decide to address students for raising a flag but not address students who threw around a beach ball? Why did you not address people using noise makers? Why did you not address the student who wore a Spider-Man mask during 2022? Why did you not address the audience booing at students and making racist remarks at families? Principal McWilliams, it is racist to discriminate against a community based on what they believe. This email was racist in only addressing the actions of pro-Palestinians and not addressing the other appalling behavior that night. I urge the school board to condemn the email sent by Principal McWilliams, apologize for the discriminatory email, and address the racist comments made during the ceremony. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. I just want to take a second to remind everyone, we're here to talk about issues and not specific individuals. So I ask that we not bring up any specific individual. If you've got an issue with a specific individual, we can take it to Dr. Winkelman. Next up is Abdullah Reder Abunaser.
My name is Abdul Qader Abunaser. And as a Palestinian-American student, recent events surrounding our high school graduation ceremony have deeply affected me. I first want to emphasize the profound importance of the situation in Gaza to me and my family. With most of my extended family residing in Gaza, they have all suffered from displacement, and tragically dozens of them have been killed. This issue weighs heavily on my heart and cannot be understated. During our graduation ceremony, several of my classmates and I made the decision to raise the Palestinian flag as a symbol of our cultural identity and support. However, the response from Principal McWilliams, as articulated in the email, left me profoundly troubled. The email implies that our actions deviated from the expected conduct for the ceremony, describing our actions as disruptive and inappropriate. I wholeheartedly believe that expressing our cultural identity and exercising our First Amendment rights should not be labeled as disruptive or inappropriate. Equally concerning is the administration's failure to address and condemn the racist remarks made during the ceremony. As an educational institution, it is imperative that we confront and denounce racism in all its forms. Moreover, I find it concerning that the email includes a threat to sanction students that draw inappropriate attention and detract from the dignity of the graduation ceremony. This threat following the characterization of our actions as inappropriate and detracting from the ceremony's dignity is deeply concerning. As a school, it is absolutely crucial that you actively promote and support students in expressing themselves freely without fear of any repercussions. It is entirely inappropriate to threaten to sanction students for simply exercising their First Amendment rights in a non-harmful way. I stand before you today to demand the following actions: to publicly acknowledge and condemn the racist behavior that occurred during the graduation ceremony; to publicly apologize for negatively singling out pro-Palestinian students in front of the entire graduating class of 2024 and their parents, and acknowledging the harm caused by this action. I urge the school board, Dr. Winkelman, and Principal McWilliams to take these demands seriously. Our school must be a place where all students feel safe, respected, and valued regardless of their cultural identity and background. Thank you for your attention and consideration.
Next up is Ahmad Abunaser.
Hello, my name is Ahmad Abunaser. Abdul Qader is my son, and so is Sarah. And I have two more children who are going through the Barrington school system. You know, I had something written, but I just wanted to acknowledge the first gentleman who talked. Raising a Palestinian flag is not against Jewish people. I just want to stress this. It's not against Jewish people. In fact, many Jewish people support Palestine. I just want to say this at the beginning. And I want to make sure that no one takes that us raising the flag is against Jewish people. I have Jewish friends. We have Jewish people who attend our rallies when we go. So I just want to make that clear. So I'm going to cut to the chase and go through my speech. So we have, as Abdul Qader said, family who have been killed in Gaza. And it is very emotional for us, especially that it's funded by our tax dollars. So I'm paying to kill my family. Think about how that makes you feel. Some of them are one year old. Some of them are 95 years old. I have uncles. I have aunts. I have cousins who have been killed. They have nothing to do with politics. And all of them are homeless now. Not a single one has a house to live in. They are all living in tents and having to move on a weekly basis. Coming to the email that Principal McWilliams sent on May 29th, I find this email to be very repulsive in its nature. The act of displaying a flag, whatever flag it is, did not violate the expectations shared with the community on April 22nd. And I challenge Principal McWilliams and the board to show me language that this was explicitly stated. The claim that displaying a flag is disruptive is not supported by facts, as the students displayed a flag for a few seconds while walking and then quickly folded the flag away. That's all what happened. If displaying a flag was really against the code of conduct, then it should have resulted in immediate exclusion from the ceremony as the email sent on April 22nd stated. That did not happen. Principal McWilliams stated in his email that this happened, his email was sent after having conversations within the community, and after those conversations elicited emotions. We were not involved in these conversations. This showed us the fact that This showed us the fact that the email was sent about six days after, that it was not a clear violation of rules. Otherwise, it would have resulted in immediate exclusion, or there would have been an email the next day. Threatening students with sanctions just because they displayed a flag that was not against any people, it was for people but not against any people, I want to stress this. The flag of Palestine is not against Jewish people, it's not against Jewish people.
Thank you very much. We have one more speaker, Amina Ahmed.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education. My name is Amina Ahmed. I am 20-years-old, I'm a resident of South Barrington, and I will be a law student very soon. I would first, before I even start talking, just acknowledge the tragedy and the loss of life that the Abunaser family shared with us today. I mean, what you said is beyond any words and condolences that I can give, but I would like to acknowledge what you said. So I'm here to speak about a deeply troubling incident that occurred during the recent Barrington High School graduation ceremony, and to address the broader implications of the school's policy on flags at such events. During the ceremony, students chose to display flags, and the simple act was met with hostility and racist remarks. My family and I were personally yelled at with statements like, "Get him out of here," pointing to a Muslim student, and I quote, "Get the F out," and the word was said. My family was cursed at my brother's graduation, just because of the way that we looked. My family and other Muslim families present, my elderly grandparents included, felt unsafe and targeted. The situation escalated to where we had security called on us, even though we were the ones being discriminated against. We were verbally assaulted, we were harassed, and like I said before, we were discriminated against clearly. What has compounded our distress is the subsequent email from the school administration. The communication focused solely on the actions of the students displaying flags and did not acknowledge or condemn the racist behavior that we experienced. This silence feels like a dismissal of the discrimination we face and an endorsement of the hostile environment that my family had to sit through. As Muslim Americans, we are far too familiar with racism and discrimination, we face it on our daily lives and hope that our school community could be a place of inclusion and respect. Instead, we found ourselves once again victims to bigotry and marginalization during what should have been a joyous occasion. And I know what leadership from this community continues to say, and push the narrative that the students' actions alone were disruptive. However, let me be clear, it was not the display of flags that was disruptive, but it was the reaction of the racists in that crowd that caused disruption. And I'm gonna repeat that, right? The real disruption was the hate and intolerance faced by Muslims in the crowd, not the students' right to a freedom of expression. High school graduation should be an inclusive event where everyone feels safe and respected. The administration's policy prohibiting flag displaying under the pretext of maintaining decorum raises serious concerns about students' rights to express their cultural and ethnic identities. Such a policy not only stifles expressions, but also seems to disproportionately impact minority students. I urge the board to publicly condemn the racist behavior that occurred instead of sending private emails. Just like that email was sent publicly condemning the students, we need a public email condemning the racism against my family. And we urge you to revise the flag policy to protect students' rights and ensure a safe and inclusive environment at all school events. Addressing these issues is not just about rectifying a single incident, my family does not want an apology, but we want it very much.
Thank you. Sajia Khan.
Hi. Hi, thank you so much. Thank you so much for giving me a moment to speak. Hi, Dr. Winkelman, hi. How are you all? Very nice to see you. And thank you for your time that you've spent working on this issue. I know it's been a lot, and it's good to see you again. I wanted to come because I wanted to show support for the students who I felt were targeted at graduation, and also to express my disappointment with the email that Principal McWilliams has sent out. I do feel that the families were unfairly targeted in the audience, and I am concerned that that was not called out in the email that Principal McWilliams sent, nor in the email that superintendent you had sent as a follow-up. I'm also concerned that that email was not sent to everybody, the follow-up email, and I'm hoping that after tonight, the board can revise and draft an email that would be more inclusive and will address some of the issues that are brought up tonight. Really, you know, the students that were waving a flag, all they did was wave a flag. They didn't use profanity, they didn't swear, they didn't use violence, they weren't protesting, they were just simply waving a flag. And are we, as a school board and as a school community, really going to condemn that very simple act of solidarity? And I asked the question, had it been a Mexican flag, or a Ukrainian flag, or an American flag, or even an Israeli flag, would we have had the same response? Would that same email have gone out targeting those students? And I would really like everybody on the board to consider, truly consider, the answer to that question. So I want to know, are we playing politics here based on everyone's personal politics, or are we really doing what's best for the school district and what our values are? I asked the board, the Principal McWilliams, and Dr. Winkelman, I asked that you revise the email that was sent, that it is sent out to everybody, as the previous speaker said, and that we are more inclusive and more fair in our approach to the issue. I am concerned that the families that were targeted during the graduation were not apologized to, nor were the audience members held accountable for their reaction. I think it's very important that before a graduation, we ask students to act a certain way, but we also have to ask the audience to act in decorum. And when they're not acting in decorum, we do need to hold them responsible. And I feel that that was lacking in Principal McWilliams' email. I hope that that can be fixed, I hope that that can be worked on, and I really want to say thank you for all your time and effort. I know this is a lot of work, and I know you've been dealing with this nonstop. So I do appreciate that, and I really hope we can come to a conclusion that is beneficial for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes public comment. Dr. Winkelman, do you want to make a... I guess I'll turn over to you for your report.
Yeah. Before, yeah, before I jump into my report, obviously, there's been feedback this evening that I'd like to make a comment and a statement about. You know, the high school graduation, it's just one of the celebratory events that we hold annually towards the end of the school year. However, when I reflect on this entire past school year, we've certainly had a variety of situations occur in our community. Some straightforward, others challenging, some happy and joyous, and others somber and tragic. And I believe our administrative team has approached each of these situations and events that we've faced this past school year in a thoughtful manner. In addition, I believe our administration has demonstrated a willingness to listen, to learn, reflect, and demonstrate a practice of continuous improvement. And I want to reassure our board and our community that our administration will apply the same caring, reflective, and considered approach on this matter with our high school graduation ceremony, as we have approached other things this past school year. Thank you. Sure. All right, so let me switch to my report. Thank you, Janine. So I have two items this evening. My first item is an update on our student enrollment, as we just concluded one school year, and we are getting ready for the 2024-2025 school year. So for the past several months, we've been periodically making adjustments to the number of sections that we offer to align with our class size guidelines. Board members, you have an updated elementary enrollment sheet in front of you this evening. I thought it would be helpful as you follow along. You can see at this point in time, the vast majority of our sections across all of our elementary schools and grade levels are within our class size guidelines. This was accomplished by adjusting or moving sections within a particular school, as well as shifting sections between our schools, or adding additional sections. For example, this spring, due to increased enrollment that we have experienced throughout the school district, in particular at the kindergarten level, throughout kindergarten roundup starts on February 1st every year, we've actually added three additional kindergarten sections just since that time, even though we're one week out of school, at Grove Lines, and then most recently at North Barrington Elementary, again, in an effort to make sure that our class sizes are within those prescribed guidelines. We'll continue to monitor our enrollment throughout the summer and continue to make adjustments as necessary, and then I will, at that August meeting before the start of the school year, provide another update and another chart for you on our enrollment. And then my second slide this evening, I'd like to welcome Dr. Tina Rivera. We are recommending Dr. Rivera for our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources and Talent Acquisition position. It's on the personnel report this evening. A little bit about Dr. Rivera, she holds several education degrees, a doctorate from Aurora University in Ed Leadership, a master's from Loyola University in School Counseling, and a bachelor's from Augustana College in both Psychology and Spanish. And a little bit about her work history, she is coming to us from Lydon High School District, where she has held a number of positions in District 212, most recently Director of Human Resources. Prior to that, Assistant Principal of Student Services at East Lydon, and Dean of Students at West Lydon. And prior to her administrative work, she worked at G. Westinghouse High School and Uplift Community High School as a bilingual student counselor. Look forward to hearing more from Dr. Rivera in a little bit. And that concludes my report.
May I just make a, if I can form a question or not? Just looking at the enrollment sheet.
Yes.
It's exciting to see the K-Lab added on here.
It is.
And thank you so much for adhering to, you know, what we talked about, which was keeping within the guidelines. So, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
First, I was gonna ask you where K-Lab was, and then I found it.
You found it. We added a box to the familiar chart because of our new program.
And we traditionally have more kindergartners through the summer also, so we can expect some of these numbers to increase?
Yeah, we typically continue to monitor enrollment throughout the summer months. Families move at different times, but natural times when families may be moving and settling into a school district, kindergarten, or middle school or high school, actually. Those entry points are typically where we see the greatest enrollment growth, but every grade in between, yes, we will continue to monitor all summer. But as you can see, we have room across.
We have room almost everywhere.
Yeah, we do. We're in a really good position for just being at the start of June.
Can you just share kindergarten at Sunny Hill? I just, are there two sections or one, and is there...
So there's two sections. We are currently assessing which students will be in the one-way immersion program or our Gen Ed program. So we listed the total number right now.
Okay.
Later this summer, I'll be able to show how we've split those two sections.
Great.
How'd I do? Okay.
It looks like we're nearing capacity for kindergarten at Lines. Have we had to send kindergarteners to other school cap-and-sent yet this year?
Yep. So we actually opened a third section a few weeks ago. We, as you can see, those three now sections are all full, and we do have some students on that cap-and-sent list, and we're working with those families as to another potential kindergarten location or our K-Lab. I believe they've selected another school location. As we've discussed, we have room at other buildings, so we work with our families on those, where there may be some preference if availability exists.
So it looks like generally a pretty robust response to upcoming free full-day kindergarten, but still room for K-Lab and a couple of, and some other schools as well.
Yes, I think we experienced both, right? I think our board and our community, you know, we're welcoming a full-day kindergarten program without a fee for the first time for our community, which has garnered more interest. In addition, we're also offering, for the first time, a kindergarten lab program housed at Barrington High School. So I think because of that, yes, we've increased enrollment and we've increased, or I'm sorry, we've accelerated how soon families are signing up. But as you can see, we've been able to manage it.
Yeah. All right, any other questions? All right. Let us move on to information reports. We didn't have any this week. So, board committee reports, anything to report? We've got a second reading of policy coming up.
Yep, we did have a meeting, I think of PTO Presidents Council, oh, we may have, Barry, you reported on that from last time.
He did.
Okay. We've had some new PTO presidents who are incoming, and look forward to a great next school year.
Awesome. All right, well, we can move on to the consent agenda then. Do we then, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we've got quite a bit on here. Let me just read, yeah, let me just read through what all we have on here. We have minutes from May 21st, both open and closed. No finance reports. We have a revised personnel report. We have our Student Discipline Committee report, hazardous crossing resolution, or a list of authorized depositories, and appointment of the school treasurer. Any questions or comments, any of those things? Are you ready, Sarah?
I'm ready.
Okay.
I'm ready.
Do you hand out the checkbook or the big calculator, Dave? How does it work exactly?
Big pencil.
Big pencil, okay. I was just curious.
So just a comment on that, the school treasurer is something we vote on every year and appoint the school treasurer, so. Ceremony is this year in particular because we've got a changing of the guard. So with that, let's have a roll call.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Leah Colister Lizari.
Yes.
Diana Clapton.
Yes.
Steve Wang.
Yes.
Katie Caron.
Yes.
Erin Chanding.
Yes.
Barry Oldshue.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. We have a number of action items. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, let me pause, sorry. Sorry, sorry, Tina.
We got a lot of business to get to, but we'd first like to give Dr. Tina Rivera an opportunity to address the board. And welcome. It's official now. Congratulations.
I just would like to say thank you to the board and everyone for the approval. I'd also, you know, I'm really excited to continue the really wonderful work that Barrington does, what a, you know, very prestigious reputation, and I'm super excited to join the team. I'm also really excited to continue the work that Teresa's been doing with her team and just be a member of the team and the continue moving forward. So, thank you all, I just really appreciate it.
Welcome.
Welcome.
I owe you a backpack of Barrington swag. So that's what we, that was the moment up here, because usually I try to have something this evening, but we will get it too. There you go, yeah, true.
Yeah. All right. All right, so let's move on to our action items. Second reading of board policy. We talked through these six policies last week. I'm gonna see if we've got a motion to approve all of them all at once, I'll read through what they are. We have a motion to approve them as presented.
So moved. Second, second.
Any, any questions or discussion needed? Let me read, think about that while I read through what they are. We have Policy 4-190, Targeted School Violence Prevention; Policy 4-30, Revenue and Investments; Policy 7-10, Equal Educational Opportunities; Policy 7-20, Harassment of Students Prohibited; Policy 7-40, Non-Public School Students, Including Parochial and Homeschooled Students; and Policy 7-180, Prevention and Response to Bullying, Intimidation, and Harassment. Any, any questions or comments? Help me remember Teresa, all these, most of these were all based on new laws that were passed in.
Correct. Correct, so that is for, we just pulled up.
I think there was a couple that we had some of our own changes to.
So there was one, there was one where we wanted to define volunteers, which was direction for the board last time, and Teresa has provided that update to that policy.
That was in 4-190, so we added that in there. We did have the finance one that came out of Finance Committee, and then the other changes were, I'm just thinking, the one where we're adding now to the, I'm looking right here, 2-2-7-0, the new policy that we're adding in for discrimination and harassment on the basis of race, color, and national origin prohibited.
All right.
And then I think 7-40 was just to update the language to be more inclusive.
Yes, that's right, thank you, Erin.
Yes, that's right. Thank you, Erin.
Okay. Any other questions? Let us do a roll call.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
Leah Colister Lazzari?
Yes.
Katie Carum?
Yes.
Erin Chanding?
Yes.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Steve Wang?
Yes.
Diana Clapton?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. We've got some new policies. Next action item, do I have a motion to approve an Administrator Employment Contract for fiscal year 2025 with Dr. Lisa West as an Elementary Principal for the period beginning July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025, substantially in the form presented by the Superintendent, and to authorize the President to sign the contract in lieu of the multi-year contract with Dr. West that was approved by the Board on May 7th of 2024?
So moved. Second.
All right, any, any questions on this one? All right, so we're, we're going from a multi-year contract for Dr. West into a single-year contract. Essentially what, what is being done here. All right, let's do a roll call.
Leah Colister Lazzari?
Yes.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
Diana Clapton?
Yes.
Erin Chanding?
Yes.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Katie Carum?
Yes.
Steve Wang?
Yes.
Thank you for the approval. Dr. West is doing excellent work at North Barrington. We definitely want to extend the contract to her for next year.
All right, excellent. Thank you. Okay, next action. I'm sorry, I've got a couple of things to read here. I just make sure I do it correctly. The Board will now consider and vote on the recommendation for a Notice to Remedy be adopted regarding Dr., Mr. Jim Schmidt, discussed in the Board's previous closed session meeting. Do we have a motion and a second from the Member of the Board to adopt the resolution authorizing the Notice to Remedy?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Okay. Member Leah Colister Lazzari has moved to adopt the resolution authorizing the Notice to Remedy regarding Mr. Jim Schmidt, discussed this evening during the Board's closed session. May I, may I have a roll call, please?
Steve Wang?
Yes.
Erin Chanding?
Yes.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Katie Carum?
Yes.
Diana Clapton?
Yes.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
Leah Colister Lazzari?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. One more action item for us before we get into our discussion items. Do I have a motion that the Board of Education of Barrington Community Unit School District 220 affirm the administration's suspension of Student A? I further move that the Board of Education adopt the Hearing Officer's Report from the Suspension Appeal Hearing. The Superintendent will provide a letter to the parents of the student reflecting his determination. So, I motion them. Is that clear?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Roll call, please?
Katie Carum?
Yes.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Erin Chanding?
Yes.
Steve Wang?
Yes.
Leah Colister Lazzari?
Yes.
Diana Clapton?
Yes.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. That concludes our action items for this evening, and we get to move into our discussion items. I'll guess I'll just turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you. Yep, we have three discussion items this evening, all related to our referendum conversations and our community engagement. First up, I'd like to invite Dr. Comforter and our representatives from EO Sullivan up to the table to give the first presentation tonight.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here this evening. I am joined by Mr. Colin Corbett from EO Sullivan, who will provide the Board with an update similar to what we provided to the Referendum Advisory Committee on May the 20th with regard to our community engagement work that has been done during Phase 3. So, at this time, I will turn it over to Mr. Corbett.
Excellent. Thank you, Josh. A couple of things as we get going. First, thank you to the Board and Dr. Winkelman for having us out again to present the latest findings that we have from this process. I also just want the Board to know, we work with a lot of districts throughout the state, and working with your team, your staff, has been tremendous. They are wonderful to work with. Josh has been incredible. We didn't know him prior to this process. He's been great to work with. So, I want the Board to know how professional and capable your staff has been throughout this. As we go through the report, I'll give you a sort of a list or an agenda of the things we're gonna talk about. The overall participation, the levels, as you'll see, are tremendous. What are the feedback results that we saw? And I'll, I'll tell you that I'm gonna give you all the data, and then I'm gonna explain what you're seeing in that data. So, I'll give you a lot of information and then go through it and explain it bit by bit, and then, of course, open it up to questions, as I'm sure you'll have questions. But I won't kind of explain each piece as we go, because that could get kind of confusing. So, we'll give you, see there, the second and third bullets are to give you the results, and then fourth, fifth, sixth bullets are our analysis of that data and of those results. Then I'll pass it to, I think, Josh and the RAC to give their recommendation, and we'll talk about what next steps could look like at that point. So, the overall participation continues to be strong. Strong is a very weak word for what I want to say, which is incredibly strong. Kudos to you all and the RAC and just your community at large. We have to give Barrington, your district has achieved the highest level of feedback we have ever seen in this process, and we've been doing this since 2017. So, kudos to you all and your community. Clearly, their, your community is engaged. They want to have their voices heard. And kudos to you all for listening to their voices and to their opinions. These numbers are tremendous, and what we want to see is over 1,000. You guys are over double that. So, wonderful to see that level of engagement, and it's really awesome to see. In Phase 3 specifically, we received over 1,000 responses. Again, that was the highest we've ever seen, in specifically in Phase 3. We'll talk about what it means, but you'll see, as we've talked about, the data is broken up into the two groups, as you'll see on the next slide. So, you're gonna see the data from specifically your RAC, the Referendum Advisory Committee, and then you're gonna see the data from the community members. Those two data points are gonna be separated. I'm gonna give you just the responses and the feedback, and then, of course, as I said, I'll give the analysis in a bit. I know we read left to right, but my team who put this together did it backwards, so please read right to left as we talk about this. Let's talk about the RAC on the right. So, their feedback on the three options, you'll see on the right-hand side, their options three and two were nearly tied. Option three does take a slight lead, but those two numbers are very close together. That's why they're listed there in the green amongst the options. Option one did not come in, in too poorly, but did clear, come in a clear third. The option for no funding came in a distant fourth from your RAC. Not surprising, but you can see it's certainly heartening to see. On the left-hand side of, of those options, you'll see the public engagement, so the people who took time to give us their feedback online. You'll see options two, one, and three, again, all essentially tied, which is why it's green. Clearly, option two did take first, so I wanna make sure I call that out, but the .3 difference is very close. So, it's essentially a tie, but again, clearly, option two was first out of those three, but that's why they're all listed in green. No funding came in fourth with a gap behind those top three. So, again, good to see that the public has their preferences, but they are willing to make at least some level of investment into their schools. We also, as you know, added the addendum question about should we talk about, consider, study the idea of doing a field house? Again, I'll look at the right first, the Referendum Advisory Committee. You'll see there in green that your support number, 24% agreed to that, that this would be something to move forward with. 76% said no. You see a difference in the numbers there with your, with your public engagement, where it is almost exactly split there 50/50. Again, opposed took a slight lead there with 52%, but 52/48 is essentially a tie. I will talk again later about what all this means. I just wanna give you the data first. We also had the ability for people to provide their feedback in an open-ended question, so not just giving us their rankings, but also giving us feedback and making sure they have a chance to emphasize things that are important to them. You'll see the numbers on screen there of people who specifically called certain things out. The Field House clearly had a lot of people who came on to take the survey to specifically support the Field House, as you can see. You also saw a number of people who took it specifically to show their support for auditorium and fine arts. And then you see a number of other important positions, people who are against increases in taxes, people who oppose the Field House, and then a number of other things that deserve recognition, lower numbers, but still 21 people saying they support safety is a solid number. So, it's worth calling out. The full report to this is obviously available to the Board for all the feedback. We've summarized it here on screen just for this discussion. Again, I will come back to this as we talk about the analysis. Next, we'll get into the phone survey. So, we once again took a phone survey for members of the community. It was once again made available in English and Spanish to make sure there were limited barriers to people who would like to participate. It was available all throughout the course of the week, and so we made sure that anyone who'd like to participate were able to do so. We got over 500 phone responses. Again, we talked about, I think, at our last meeting together, over 300 is your minimum. Over 400 is really good. Over 500 is excellent. So, yet another marker of really solid feedback from your community. It also gives us a lot more confidence in the data as we present it. Having this much feedback gives you even more confidence in the data that you're looking at. You'll see on screen those results. Obviously, it's a lot of numbers. I'll walk you through a couple of the key numbers there. As a reminder of the way that we ask questions, if you start in the center of the screen there where it says Option 1, what we do is we ask people their opinion on each individual option separately, and then we ask them to rank them. So, you'll see there, Option 1, if I do the math here, which I have the benefit of having the Excel version on my side, so I'll do the math for you. The support is 56%, opposed 40%, so a net of plus 16 for Option 1. Option 2, 47% support, 48% oppose, for a net of zero. Please understand, I know 47 and 48 are not the same number, but with rounding, sometimes that's what happens. But the net number there is zero. Finally, Option 3, 43% support, 52% opposition, for a net of negative 10. The thing we look at the most in this survey is that preferred option. That's where we say, please pick between these three. Which one do you prefer? You'll see there, Option 3 took a commanding lead at 32% of those who chose an option. Meanwhile, there was 32%, so a third who chose no additional funding. We'll talk about again what all this means shortly. Finally, we asked that addendum question of the Field House. I'll once again give you those added-together numbers. The strong, the support number is 29% in total. The opposed is 65, so your net number there is negative 36. In other words, a net of those who oppose. We'll come back to this actually next. So, what does this all mean? Again, I'll, I'll stop at the end for questions, and we can dive back into some of that data if you'd like. But let me give you the analysis of what all this means. The first thing is that high level of engagement is in and of itself a data point that we look at. It means people are engaged. It means people are interested. That alone is an important point to look at. We also saw, though, with the high level of feedback in the online feedback, there's clearly a lot of passion here. We didn't just see it with the responses. We saw it in the wording of the responses. We saw it in people who came up to us throughout this process. There was a tremendous level of passion, the highest that we've seen. And the reason why we call that out is it makes it that much more important that we have a final plan that is a consensus plan for the community to support. They are clearly paying attention. They are passionate, so we, of course, have to make sure we do this right. I know I don't have to tell your Board that we need to do this right, but still, it's something we have to make sure we call out. What we see within the data and the underlying information here is that any of these three options could be successful if you were to decide to move forward with them as a referendum at the ballot box. The community does have a preference, and we'll talk about what that preference is, but none of these options needs to be immediately discarded. For many of our clients, at this meeting, I'm saying, hey, this option is a no-go. It's out. Or this option is your only option, because the other two aren't favorable. In this case, there are priorities, there are preferences, but none of these three are in such a bad position that I would be telling you, don't even talk about it. Don't even think about it. All three of these are available to you all for consideration. That said, you see that Option 3 was the most preferred option. It's notable that when you see in that phone survey that 32% chose Option 3, generally, the phone survey is gonna be your most, for lack of a better term, I'll use conservative audience. They're the ones who are gonna choose the lowest option typically, when we look at our other clients. They're the ones who are gonna say that they're the most concerned about, about funding. And so, to see that Option 3 took not only the win out of the phone survey, but such a commanding win out of the three options that were chosen, that's why it's clear it is the preferred option from the community. But I do wanna point to those second and third bullets. It does show some weakness. It, it, in and of itself is not the runaway favorite without some signs that maybe there needs to be some tweaks. You saw there when I mentioned the favorability. It had a net negative 10 in favorability. That's not a number that can't be overcome, but it is something we have to look at. It isn't overwhelming here that we could say, hey, just without changes, Option 3 is ready for primetime. I also saw, when you see those passionate respondents, and let me just go back so I can point to what I'm talking about. When you look at the most passionate respondents, so on the left there, the public engagement, Option 3 came in third. Now, it is a close to a tie amongst the three, but it did come in third. We have to point that out. And so, again, another sign of relative weakness. Not so much so that I'm not saying it didn't, isn't your first best option here, but it does show some, some weakness. Coming back to where we were on this slide here. I also saw, I lied, I'm gonna go back, amongst the Referendum Advisory Committee, let me go back to this. If you look on the right-hand side, I pointed to in the phone survey how Option 3 was a runaway favorite, which was surprising. But conversely, also as surprising was that Option 3 was not the runaway favorite amongst your committee. Typically, the committee is gonna be your most in favor of investing as much as possible into the schools. And so, while it did take first, you see here it was tied essentially with Option 2. So, again, just a small sign that we should take into account as we consider our path forward of a little bit of weakness there for Option 3. Okay, I'm sorry for the bouncing back and forth, but it does help kind of explain things as we go. Option 2 does come in a strong second. As we talked about before, it was nearly tied as the preferred option for your RAC. It was the top option amongst those who took time to go online to give us their feedback via the online feedback form. On the flip side, though, it came in third in the phone survey, and I should probably be careful. I'm a little Italian, so I can sometimes wave the arms too much. So, it is, Option 2 does come in in a strong second. It is clearly second behind Option 3. But this is where you can see that the public does want the benefits of Option 3, but there is some concern over funding. Let me go back to the phone survey results. I'm sure some of you saw that number, just like I saw under preferred option. No additional funding at 32%. This is an increase from the last survey. I do call out in our analysis that this number always increases at this stage in our process. As things become more real, the public starts to have to decide, do I wanna support something like this, or do I not? And so, this number always does go up, so it's not a cause for concern, but it is something we have to point to, that no additional funding did tie with Option 3, and so we do have to point that out. And so, all of this taken together is why, yeah, so you see here, I do, everything I gave you verbally is here on this slide. I'll leave it up just for those who prefer to read. But that's why on this slide here, we talk about how taking this all into account, it shows Option 3, 2, or a plan in between those numbers is likely where your best range would be. Our advice is to build off Option 3, because it is clear the public does strongly like Option 3, and it is the top choice of your RAC, though I certainly don't wanna steal their thunder. But there is some weakness to that option. And so, if there's an ability to find ways to find some efficiencies, reduce that tax impact, reduce that cost, and if it requires reducing the focus on some of those projects from Phase 2 that were the lowest priority, then clearly the community would support that, that those were their lowest priority projects. Let's reduce some of the focus on those within Option 3 to come up with a consensus plan that has a lower tax impact. That's likely where you're gonna find your sweet spot, your consensus best option forward. Of course, then you all will take that and figure out what you believe to be best for the district and the community. As you guys know, we did add on the Field House as an additional question. We did have some discussion on that in our last Board meeting. I give a lot of positive feedback to your district and your district team. They really felt strongly that it was important to let the community have their voices heard on this, that there were a lot of people who felt very strongly about this, both for and against. And so, it was important, just like this whole process has been transparent and collaborative, to continue that, even here at this late end of this, this third phase, to add this on. And so, for some, it was frustrating. We'll talk about that in a second, how having this added on towards the end of the process was a little bit frustrating. The good news is we did get a lot of feedback, and the community did have a chance to have their voice heard on what clearly is a very passionate subject for the public. What you saw from the previous results there, which I'll call out, was that the moving forward with studying the Field House had a net favorability of negative 36. This is a fairly negative number. Negative 10, even into the negative teens, is livable. Negative 36 is fairly overwhelming opposition. It is very strong opposition to this, so it has to be pointed out. And your Referendum Advisory Committee, they were three to one opposed with studying it. And so, you certainly see some level of opposition to this. But the idea of this, the discussion, as you saw, as we see it call up, call out on that third bullet, even that was controversial. There's a lot of people who feel very strongly for, they feel very strongly against, even to the level where there was ballot stuffing by both sides. Thankfully, we were able to suppress that, and I appreciate the passion by the public. The good news is, we, we do survey work around the country. My team is, they know how to do this to make sure that you still have solid and safe data to look at. We had responses from other countries. You had people using VPNs to try to vote, somebody tried to vote 20 some odd times. So, we were able to suppress a lot of that so that this data could be usable as we look forward at it. But I think just that passion is important to point to, that if people feel that strongly, it definitely warrants conversation, that there's clearly a really strong feelings on both sides of it, as you saw in the responses. I have to point to that even the Referendum Advisory Committee at our previous meeting, it did lead to some frustration that this was even brought up at this later stage. And so, this is a hot-button issue, to be sure, and so, that's really guiding what we suggest as we move forward. And so that's really guiding what we suggest as we move forward. I mentioned our data team, I think at one of our first meetings, I bored you all with a way-too-long explanation of the three ways that we gather data. And the reason why we do that is so we can separate the data out in case there's something like this, where there's a lot of passionate responses. Only in probably one or two out of ten clients do we ever even need to do this. You guys became one of those one or two. So I'm really glad that we have a really in-depth and sometimes overly complicated process. But what that allowed us to do, and I'm going to walk you through this, because it could be a little complicated, but what that allowed us to do was to split out the responses, to see where is the, the people who just wanted to tell us how they felt about a fieldhouse versus general members of the public who weren't really engaged in the fieldhouse back and forth in that discussion. And so we were able to do that. I'm going to show you a couple of numbers. First thing on that second bullet, as you'll see, that those who took the phone survey, let me make sure I get this right, give me one second. I think the bullets are a little bit backwards here. Let me go back just on the screens, because it'll be easier if I just show you visually. So those who are engaged by the, the public, who came to us to give their feedback, you can see fifty-two, forty-eight on the bottom left, incredibly split. A thousand responses being split fifty-fifty is kind of impressive. And there was a lot of work, as I said, on both sides to push their people to the polls on this. And so it's clear that there's a lot of passion, and those passionate people are pretty evenly split in your community, either for or against. So that's one of the things we were able to look at. The second thing that we were able to look at is, hold on, I'm sorry. There, let's look at the bottom bullet, that's why I'm getting confused, I think the bullets got flipped here. So those who called in to take the phone survey, one of the things we're able to do is to separate out those who call in to take the survey versus those who just receive the survey and take it that way. It's not a perfect gauge, but it is helpful to see. If somebody took the time to call in, they obviously felt very passionately about something, or in some cases, were told to call in and give their feedback, either for or against something. And so if you separate those two out, it's kind of helpful. What we saw is that those who called in to take the phone survey, you'll see there, forty-one percent supportive to fifty-three percent opposed. So compared to the larger universe, is much more supportive to the, the fieldhouse, but still, as a net number, opposed. That said, those who we simply called out, that's that second bullet that you see above, that's twenty-seven percent support to sixty-seven percent opposed, a net forty. So those who just took the survey, when they got called, who didn't call into it, is a negative forty. So again, this can get a little complicated, I'm sorry, and flipping the bullets around, that was on us, that was our fault, made this extra complicated, so I'm sorry for that. But the takeaway here is, the passion is really strong for the fieldhouse and against the fieldhouse. The general public does not support, at least at this time, moving forward with the study of the fieldhouse. So what is our, our suggestion? Let me point to the second and third bullets there. Because of the overwhelming community opposition, we don't suggest including that in this current effort. But that's not a no, it's simply a not yet. We suggest, because people are clearly very passionate on this issue, engaging with those members of the community, talking about what they see as the needs, what could be a future plan to addressing this at some point in the future. Clearly, they feel very strongly, and they certainly deserve to be heard. The public's not ready for it yet. Including that with the referendum would frankly, I gotta be honest, would sink the referendum, the referendum would not succeed at the ballot box based on these numbers. And so we don't suggest including it today. That doesn't mean, though, that it's not something you all talk about as a board. Clearly, there is some interest in this in the community. So it's worthy of discussion, we just don't recommend including it in the referendum. That top bullet, I do want to point to, just in case this question was going to come up. As we were breaking up that data and looking at those who called in, maybe versus those who we called out to, one of the things that stood out to us is that the feedback from everybody who was really passionate about the fieldhouse, their feedback on the options almost exactly matched everybody else's feedback on the options. And so the word variance there is important. We look at the variance of people's feedback, and the best example I can give is with eight of you up here in front of me, if we ask you to rank my presentation today, and all of you gave me a five out of ten, that would mean I did average, and that's fine. If half of you gave me a ten and half of you gave me a one, that would also average out at right around five. And so the average isn't always the biggest indicator of what that means. All of you giving me a five means I need to improve. Half of you giving me a one and half of you giving me a ten means I really am controversial, and I better make sure I get better. And so that's called the variance, meaning the gap between one response and another. The larger that variance, the more controversial something might be. And that fieldhouse had a, had a massive variance. That's why we point to why it was so controversial. People either loved it, or they hated it. There wasn't a lot of in-between, and that's why it's important that we say to table that and look forward to that as something, maybe part of a separate effort. But it's important to note that even those people who felt that strongly, they were on the same page as everyone else in the community on options one, two, three, and their choice between those three. And so no matter what you do regarding the fieldhouse, you're on solid ground in the data on these three options and how you might want to move forward. Okay, so I think some of that was clear, some of that was unclear. So please ask me to dive into something that I could do better at explaining.
Thank you so much. I have a question, a, a follow-up around the fieldhouse. I did notice that in the supplemental comments, a hundred and fifty-three were overwhelmingly supportive of the fieldhouse, as opposed to, I think, the next, the second strongest was like sixty-some comments around the auditorium. How do we interpret that data? Could that mean that people who are more informed about what a fieldhouse could contain or bring then are more supportive of it versus if you just say, hey, we're considering a study for a fieldhouse, do you support it or not? And people don't really know what that means, they would just say, ah, I don't think I should, I mean, what, what do we do with that data? There's, and I, clearly, it shows passion, but there's such wide, such a wide majority of supplemental comments.
Yeah, and thank you for bringing that up, because I was supposed to review that, and I missed it, so thank you. So the way I would look at it is, I wouldn't compare these numbers to each other, because this wasn't a, a list of things, we asked the public, please rank these, like we did with the options, for instance. We gave them options, they picked between them. This was simply an empty box where we said, hey, if you have additional thoughts, please share them. And so I would not compare these numbers to each other. What I would do is look at the number and say, you look at that fieldhouse, it is a substantial number at a hundred and fifty-three. That speaks to me about how organized and passionate the supporters of the fieldhouse are. That's the, my takeaway from this. I don't compare it to the others, because sixty-three in favor of auditorium and fine arts, sixty-two responses is a significant number of responses. I mean, to be honest, usually, I'm sitting here saying, we got three responses to this and four responses to that for most communities. So sixty-three, sixty-two, even nine and six towards the bottom are all really solid feedback numbers. So I would not compare these to each other. My major toku takeaway from this is, again, the passion of those who do support the fieldhouse is felt very strongly here. If, my takeaway would be, without necessarily facts to back this up, that likely those who support the fieldhouse instructed people to not only go in and take the survey, but also type in the notes, we support the fieldhouse, or something like that. So it shows to me, organization, it shows to me that people are passionate about it. That's my major takeaway. Again, I wouldn't compare them to it and say, okay, people are more passionate on this versus that, because who knows if those who went on to support the auditorium, did they tell people, also make sure you type in the notes? You start to get into guesswork on that, if you start comparing these to each other, and I, I don't like to guess when it comes to data.
We've given very little data around a potential fieldhouse, because we don't know a lot about it, it's so early stage. Is it possible that the more people know about a fieldhouse, the more they might support it? Or is that not fair to extrapolate from this? Like, what?
I wouldn't say that that comes out of this data. I would simply say that does come out of our experience. And I think it does come out of your district's experience, too. I mean, look at where we are today with the auditorium, we weren't here on the auditorium six years ago. And so I think your district has proven that have the discussion, have the conversation, and maybe you all in the community say, great, we had the communication, and it just doesn't make sense for us. Or you have the communication, and it does make sense for you. But I, I think, again, the feedback that I saw from this, my takeaway was, it's not a no, it's a not yet. And continue the discussion, it doesn't mean you're going to do something, because there was very vocal opposition, too, as you saw in that phone survey. And so, you know, it's, it's not yet, but it doesn't mean a yes or no for the future. But that engagement, what we have seen is that as people become more informed and educated on needs, yes, some will become more supportive, but some also may say, okay, I'm glad I know more about this, I'm sorry, I'm still not on board. But I, I think the real overwhelming feedback that I see right now is, we've got a path ahead of us to cover some, some needs right now that are, at the moment, a higher priority. Let's solve these needs, and then we can look at what might be things we would solve in the future.
So your interpretation is not yet even for a study for this particular referendum?
Yeah, definitely not in this referendum. The community's not, isn't even ready for that study, let alone including the project itself.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, because I want to clarify. Well, first of all, I would say, do you want me to rank your performance?
Yes. I don't think my ego can take it.
I'm just kidding. I, I gotta be honest, it's not surprising to me that the referendum advisory committee is overwhelmingly against the fieldhouse. They, most of them, I'm sure, joined because they want a fine arts center, or they, in some part. So, but I just wanted, so I don't walk away quoting you, did you say, in your opinion, adding a fieldhouse would sink the referendum at this time?
Yeah, basically, looking at the data, when we see the net favorability of negative thirty-six, just looking at the phone survey, the, the public's just not on board with this at this time. And so when you go to a referendum, the difference is, you're no longer speaking to those who are the most tied to the schools, the most informed as to the school's needs. You're talking to the general member of the public, who on average will be less tied to the schools, less informed. And so they're not going to become more informed by November. That, that's not enough time, it takes years, not a couple of months. And so it's not to say that the fieldhouse is a good thing or a bad thing. My job is just to read the data. And so I leave that to you all as the leaders of this district. Just from the data's perspective, if you all decide you'd like to move forward with the referendum in November, that referendum just can't have any ties to a fieldhouse yet at this time.
That doesn't mean we don't look at it and talk about it, right? I mean, every time I visit a school that has a fieldhouse, I'm like, oh, that would be nice if we had this.
Yeah, and that's what we say, we definitely suggest in that, that bullet there, connecting with those who feel passionately about this. I, I certainly, we've worked with districts, we have passed fieldhouse referendums with other districts. So we've seen the value that it could provide to a community, and we're not speaking to whether or not it's valuable for your district, that's not our job. Just right now, the community's not ready for it, that's all we're saying. And so we do encourage those conversations to continue, but if you all decide you'd like to move forward in November, that's not enough time to change a negative thirty-six number and, and get that to a positive number.
I just wanted to point out that in front of you, just, maybe you've already noticed, but we did put what all the options are, in case you wanted to see what they were, and what the definition of each one of them is as well. I meant to mention it where you started, I didn't want to interrupt.
Can I, are we, can I ask one more, uh, not fieldhouse-related? So I'm assuming you didn't make a, I mean, you're saying somewhere between option two and option three seems to be.
Yeah, honestly, any of the options have a decent likelihood of succeeding. So you, you don't, it doesn't have to be even between those two options. You could choose two, or you could choose three, and it has a, has good odds of succeeding. Your sweet spot, where you're, you're in their best chance of being successful, would be in between the two, based on three, but definitely with a tax impact that would be less than three.
Because that was, so obviously, the people who took the study are doing, are engaged, they're informed, they're, the vast majority of people who show up at the ballot box, I'm sure, a good majority probably aren't. So do you feel there's a risk going for more, or do you think that you can really depend on the, the public that gave their opinion?
That's why we do the phone surveys, because that's the public, those are the people who are less engaged. And so that's why we do those first phone surveys, the way that we do them. And so the numbers being as solid as they are, specifically in the phone survey, shows that there's, there's a lot of support and a lot of favorability towards moving forward with somewhere in that range, somewhere in that window. The next thing we look at is your, your committee, those are obviously your most passionate and, and active people, and they will, of course, give their report next. And seeing their strong preference as well plays into our advice here, our analysis here, that when, when you've got a group of people who are leaders in the community and would likely be very actively involved in whatever this process might look like going towards November, and seeing how strongly they feel as well, all of that makes us feel confident that you're in a, a very solid position if you're in that range in your final decision.
I think you back on what she asked. I'm going back to your slide eight, and we've talked about this before. I'm very concerned about choice three negativity, even though you're saying, oh, it's, it's, you know, it's close to number one here. It, it got much more negativity than either's options one or two, and so that's telling us something that the community's trying to share with us.
Yeah.
So I just wanted you to comment a little more on that.
Yeah, that's absolutely one of the things we called out as well in our analysis that we talked about. First of all, the, the first piece of data we always look at is the ranking. The favorability, just like you saw in phase two, we did the favorability for all the projects, for all the funding levels. Favorability data is very helpful to know, but it's, it's not the most telling data. It's when you ask people to rank or give us your final option. I think I said this last time, so forgive me, I'm a broken record, but when you say, hey, do you want puppies and sunshine and rainbows, everybody says yes. But then you say, hey, that's going to cost fifty million dollars, now some people are going to change their opinion. Once you introduce scarcity, opinions change. And so the scarcity here is, you can only pick one of these options. And when we introduced that scarcity and said, pick an option, option three was overwhelmingly in the lead. And for context, what we typically will see is that these numbers in this phone survey would be closer together. Usually, you don't see a favorite that's over, that's double the, the next choice in the phone survey. So option three wasn't just a choice, it was an overwhelming choice, more so than we typically see. That said, to your point, there is some weakness. Seeing that unfavorability number is a level of weakness that concerns us. We point to, it's got to be based on the funding. If, if people choose this option, but they feel a little bit unhappy about it, they see that unfavorability, it's only at fifty-two is the total number, I know it, the math on screen looks like it should be fifty-three, that's just because of rounding. That number is fifty-two officially in the data, that's just barely over a majority. Those numbers can improve as, and will improve, as people see what's included in this, what is the value in this. Remember, we've done no sales in this, this has only been listening, we haven't changed any of our language based on what we saw, some of the language was working better, some of the language was working worse. We have purposely not done any of that, because we don't want to put our thumb on the scale at all. So once all that work is done, and the public sees a final package, and they see the benefits that could provide to the community, those unfavorable numbers will go down, the favorable numbers will go up. So the fifty-two doesn't scare me, it's a, it's a point of, hey, listen, we got to be aware of this. That's why I do suggest coming down in, in a final number that is below the, the cost of option three, but that's not such an overwhelming number that I say, this is a problem, option three is now off the table.
What's the unfavorability in the aggregate? Because this is just the phone survey unfavorability for option three.
We don't do favorability of the other groups, so all we have for favorability would be the phone survey, yeah.
Can we also just play with the data for a second? I'm still on page eight.
Okay.
I think I asked you this before, too, but I still want to get more on the, if we look at the preferred option, and we make the assumption that people who chose option one might be uncomfortable with options two and three, but people who chose option three probably would be okay with two or one, if, so if, if we look the other direction, we say that over sixty percent would be happy with option one, two, or three, but only thirty percent would be happy with option three, doesn't that also push us maybe to, three might be a little too much? Do you understand the question? I just want to make sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Three would support two and one, but one wouldn't necessarily support two or three.
Yeah, and I think the risk there is that you can't assume three would support two and one. I think very early on in, in our work in this, as we've learned over the years, we've been doing this since 2017, and I remember, early on, we made that assumption with a couple of our clients, that, okay, those who chose the highest option would still stick with us even if we went with a lower option. What that ends up being is you lose your passion, you lose your excitement. Those people who felt really strongly and really passionately about the things they get in option two, or the things maybe that they get in option three, you lose that excitement and that passion if you go with one of the lower options. And so that's why our approach is different. You could take that approach, which would be find the least objectionable path forward. But you lose all passion, all excitement, all interest, and what ends up happening is those people just say, many of them will say that they maybe don't show up to vote, maybe they skip the question, and so the numbers don't end up working out that way. Logically, you think they should, it just, in our experience, has not been the case in eight, nine years of doing this. So that would be sort of that, find the consensus in our least objectionable path forward, or the lowest common denominator. What we prefer is a path forward that makes sure that every community group has something that they can feel really strongly and passionately about. Do you have, for those who are fiscally focused, do you have the most fiscally responsible plan that you can come up with that uses taxpayer dollars efficiently? For those who want to see investments in education, do they see those educational benefits? For those who have a specific focus, like wanting to see an auditorium, or investments in music, are those investments being done in a, in a good and a responsible way? You want a final plan, is there infrastructure work that's being done for those who just want to see that our buildings are being maintained? Because that's usually, and even in your data, that came out amongst, for instance, seniors, where they want to see, they don't want the bells and whistles, they want to know, is our brick and mortar being maintained? And so when we're coming up with a final plan, it's with a goal that every group has something that they can feel really passionately and supportive of. That's finding that, that consensus plan that everybody can love, instead of a consensus plan that everyone goes, okay, I don't hate it. That, that's typically our preference. And so when I look at the data, to your question about combining all of those numbers, yes, you see that thirty-two percent of no additional funding is a, is a high number. I don't assume that everyone in options one and two, or unsure, will get on board with an option three plan. But if you come up with a, a plan that's between two and three, you can keep everybody at three, you can bring as many from two as possible, bring as many from one and unsure or no opinion as possible, and now you're looking at being above fifty percent, maybe even up to sixty percent at the ballot box. And your last referendum that succeeded, that's the range that it succeeded at. And so I think in your community, we have some communities where we win seventy-thirty, seventy-five-twenty-five, that just isn't, it's not the Barrington way. We're always going to be, in this community, I, my dad grew up here, I, I love this community, we're going to be a lot tougher, which is a good thing, on referendums, on spending of taxpayer dollars. And so you're, you're hoping to be in the upper fifties, you're never going to be in the sixties, seventies, eighties, it's just not how the community works. And so finding that number where you have a solid, let's say, two-thirds majority of the public that supports it, that's what brings me back to that range of between two and three is your sweet spot.
Thank you.
Is there anything we can extract about, like optimal spend levels, or is it between sixty and seventy-five million? Is that kind of what?
Yeah, it would be between the numbers you have there, tied to options two and three. I, I don't know that I could throw a pin or a dart at the board. But I do know, even if you guys were looking at, you know, a specific option that you preferred, the community seeing you guys, you know, continuing to do what you always do, which is take a, a, a fiscally conservative eye at what you're looking at, and find where are the maximum savings for our taxpayers, that's what Barrington's known for. And so even if you were looking at option three, I think the community would support and appreciate you guys, you know, if it was a million, they'd appreciate that you went in and found whatever savings you could for taxpayers. So I think just knowing your community as well as we do, because we've done a lot of work here in this community, even just not on referendums, looking at, even if your preference is option three, where can we be the most responsible and conservative, your community would be appreciative of that.
So, could we, is it okay if we hear from the referendum advisory committee, but you guys don't go too far away?
Okay.
Right? Because we're going to come back and talk about timeline?
You say reserved, is it okay if I?
Yeah, that's reserved for you right now.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Sounds good.
We might have more questions, but I want to make sure we, we hear from this group as well.
Let me reorganize the table here. Invite Tom Burns and Margot Dollstream. Lauren Clower was our other referendum advisory committee member. She regrets that she could not be here this evening, but certainly valued her input throughout the process. So Tom and Margot are here this evening to review the process thus far. We're going to remind the board about the charge, and what some of that, that work that referendum advisory committee was asked to do. And we're also excited to be able to share this evening what the recommended option is moving forward. So without any further ado, I'll turn it over to Tom or Margot.
Go ahead.
Well, the charge is that we were to be the most involved, most informed, feedback that you get. And so it was from the community organizations who nominated folks to be part of the committee, committing to four evenings of two to three hours, and, and going through the process. There was a mention before that these were maybe the folks that most favored a performing arts center or an auditorium. I'm not sure we have evidence for that. These were the folks that were most willing to spend the time. Initially, in the first meeting, we looked at ten projects. We did look at options that included a performing arts center in every one. So that developed over time. The charge we were given was to work through and understand the needs, understand the solutions, prioritize the projects, and come back to you today with a sixty percent-plus recommendation. And that we're prepared to do.
So, so far, there have been three meetings from the referendum advisory committee. The first one was in February, and at that one, they had a gallery walk, where on the projects related to the high school, they were actually able to see the spaces and hear from some of the instructors in those spaces. For example, they learned that most of the performing arts rooms were designed for programs with half of the current participants in those programs. So there's a lot of overcrowding issues that affects instruction. The visual arts rooms have not necessarily evolved to suit how those subjects are being taught, and there is not enough capacity for the number of students interested in taking those classes. The auditorium is used as a learning space, but also a community space for almost one-third of the time that it's utilized. And one of our RAC members coined the phrase that what we have now is an Eisenhower-era auditorium with Truman-era seating. So at that first meeting, after they went on the tour, they discussed the ten projects, and their job was to prioritize those projects and to prioritize a funding level. Their top five ranked projects for the committee was a new auditorium, music rooms, fine arts classrooms, safety and security, and the fine arts programming enhancements. The members were almost all tied on the medium and high funding levels at that first meeting. Then, do you want to take over on meeting two?
Yeah. In meeting two, these projects were put into options. Option one, option two, option three, and option four, no funding. And we spent a lot of time to understand in more detail the projects, and to look at the options and see how they would, would combine. Option one included the auditorium, and you see some other things. Option two included option one plus. Option three included option two plus. And so, really, that was the consistency there. When we ranked at the end of the second meeting, we were in a virtual tie between option three and option two. And you saw that in the data that Colin shared. Meeting three, we came back together again, and this time it was with the, with the goal of coming to a sixty percent consensus on what we want to do. And we had no idea how that would go, because we were tied coming into that meeting. We, we had a little bit of concern that we had spent so much time in discussing the detail of the projects, that we may not have had enough time to, to, to think about and represent our community in terms of what the cost would be, and what the tax impact would be. And so we started the meeting by having a, a conversation at the tables of the projects, but then also the cost, what are the cost implications, and what would the community bear in terms of increased taxes, and how would they look at that issue? We had table conversations, so we raised everybody's awareness of that issue. We didn't read that out to the whole group, we went right to a vote, because we wanted to see how that impacted them. And surprisingly, that vote was seventy-seven percent in favor of option three.
Wow.
So it was, it was rather overwhelming that we went from a tie to a pretty overwhelming option three. And...
And there's the list of projects that are in option three, what that funding level would be, and the approximate tax impact for a five-hundred-thousand-dollar home.
I just want to point out too, I think that we had in the charge that you were only able to vote if you participated. So not only was it that they, you went from a tie to seventy-seven, it was the same people, right? I just want to make sure that's, that's very well understood, and those people were thought from the beginning.
After they voted, we asked them what swayed their opinion or additional considerations, and I thought that, we thought that would be very good feedback to share with you. The phase, the third meeting was after the phase three work that Colin and E.O. Sullivan did. So the RAC members heard that same presentation that you just made today. And based on the community demonstrating support of option three in the phone and online surveys, they felt comfortable that there is an extreme need for some of those projects, and, and they understand the benefits of some of the other things, like the flex learning spaces. Another comment was improvements are a benefit to the whole community, not just D-220 or not just VHS students. One member said it's more cost-effective to complete all the projects at the same time, and they were concerned about referendum fatigue, if we did some now and then went back to referendum for another, for another one. Somebody commented that the programming enhancements and facility improvements support social emotional health of students, which is a big priority for the district. Improvements increase opportunities and access for students, and a lot of us came to this district for the schools. So this, the referendum represents a long-term investment to keep that going. And then we all got a laugh at one member who said that in Illinois, where finances aren't always ideal, Barrington, D-220 is an island of fiscal sanity, going into our AAA bond rating balanced budget, the money spent here stays here.
Yeah, I would, I would add too, in considerations, that in, in the very first meeting, there was time spent to share with the group that we were one of the lower tax rate school districts with one of the higher performances in terms of fiscal responsibility. And I think that set a stage, and then certainly the gallery walk had a profound impression on us. We saw the pictures, but when we walked through and saw it live, it was, it was incredible, our understanding being elevated in terms of the need. I think that's the challenge, bringing this to the community for a vote, is can we show them what we saw in such a way that they realize we have an Eisenhower auditorium, which are seating? And technology that doesn't compete with what they're going to move to college and be, and, and need to work with.
Any questions on the referendum advisory committee meetings?
Thank you for all your hard work. Committee, obviously, they're not here, but hopefully they're watching, because everybody really was, took this so seriously, and, you know, I was at all three of your meetings, and everybody really took the task very seriously, and really listened and thought, and I'm just, you know, so, so proud of the committee, and we came out strong.
I, I recognize that these are volunteer positions, so thank you to the two of you, and Lauren, for your time in leading it, and to the rest of the committee. I have a couple of, I do have a question. I do also want to applaud the phrase Eisenhower auditorium with Truman-era seating, and island of fiscal sanity, and encourage us to use that in our marketing materials when we get to that point. I do have a question, when, you know, as we were looking at the fiscal part, in, in talking with Colin, between options two and three, I was wondering if you could, and this could vary among committee members, but if you could give me an idea of the fine arts programming enhancements, of how important and how crucial the committee thinks that is? Because I'm looking at the difference between options two and three, and option two does not address mechanical systems, windows, doors, and flooring, and fine arts programming enhancements. And just looking at the costs, mechanical systems in windows, doors, and flooring, the estimated cost, we're looking at two-point-eight million if we added that to option two for somewhere between two and three. And then fine arts programming enhancements were at twelve-point-seven million, so that's significantly more. So could you give me a little bit of feedback? And obviously, you all landed on, on option three with seventy-seven percent, but talk to me a little bit more about those programming enhancements, and why that would be so crucial? Or could we lose it potentially in order to save twelve-point-seven million off the, in the referendum? Could you address that?
I don't know that I have specific recall on that question in our conversations, but, but there was comments after the rather stunning vote to move from tied between two and three to seventy-seven percent. The choice of version three is, if we're going to do this, let's, let's do it right. Let's not come back to the community shortly afterwards. And looking at the projects, you know, you know, if we, if, if we need new mechanical systems, if we need new windows and doors, if we need flooring, we're just kicking the can down the road, and that's not what the community appreciates. So that was the feeling in the group. If we're going to do it, let's do it all. It's not that big of a delta between two and three. When you look at the tax increase for an average home of five-hundred thousand, it was two-hundred-something, two-hundred-something. So psychologically, it wasn't, it wasn't a huge gap there. So that was sort of some of the commentary, some of the anecdotal commentary, but we didn't have the specific conversation.
And the enhancements, and that, that includes art programming, expanded gallery space, production shop, and opportunities for students. Yes, Margaret?
I think they saw the benefit of it, and felt it was worth that cost difference. I think they saw the benefits of what those, that included, and felt it was worth it to have that incremental cost.
That whole group of enhancements, that that would be worth that twelve-point-seven million. Do you feel like there would be support, say we left that off, and we added the mechanical in the, in the windows, doors, and flooring for two-point-eight million, but left that enhancement part, that twelve-point-seven million chunk off? Would the enthusiasm be the same from the committee, or would we lose significant, a significant amount of passion? Just hypothetically.
I don't know how to answer that.
It's hard to say. We'd have to probably call the committee.
Seventy-seven percent's pretty strong.
It is strong. I, I, yeah, I'm impressed with that, that number. So they want, they want it all, basically.
They do.
Okay.
So given what you saw, because I did hear that the most impactful thing for people was during the gallery walk, I mean, well, how, do you think that would be our best way to sell it to the community, is maybe film those spaces, or offer up, no, actually, sorry, I won't offer up tours, but do you, do you think that that would be the most impactful way to show our community what we're actually doing?
Katie and I will lead the catwalk tour.
I'm not opposed to offering up tours.
I mean, I would, I'm not, but I'm not going to make someone else.
If we're, if we're to say so, then...
There'll be some people that would welcome the opportunity to tour it, and some people who'd rather stay home and would watch a video.
Yeah.
Right, yeah. I mean, I'm just trying to think of all the people who didn't get the opportunity that you guys got, right? And need, like, so, and I agree with you, once you're in there, you...
It's something hard, it would be hard to capture with a picture, but maybe also just with a video. I mean, what we had benefit of was some conversation about, you know, imagining in this room, an orchestra trying to rehearse, and, and were a room that would fit, and had closets that were stuffed. And, and so, I mean, we, we had enough explanation of what happened, happens in these rooms, and how inflexible they are, and how inadequate size-wise, and in some cases, technology-wise. So, so I think, I think it's, you know, it's, it's, if you could video tour folks through it, so that you understood not only the condition, the age, but the impact on the education of the kids.
Remember, we still have another RAC meeting too. Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, no, we can accommodate and structure some opportunities to get a little bit of that space for our community, so I just don't, I mean...
Yeah, we had a recommendation.
We don't have it all worked out, but we can commit to doing it.
The PTO president's council highly recommends getting as many people to sit in the Truman-era seats as possible, and have them bounce and squeak, so...
Well, the other thing is, I'm sorry. I mean, the members of the committee were representing groups, and so they, part of their charge was to go back to their group and say, you know, this is what we're talking about, what are your opinions? So I'm expecting that after the tour, people went back to their group and said, hey, I was on this tour, and I saw this, right? Did that happen? Did you, did you experience that?
Several members did say they feel comfortable promoting this to their constituents, explaining it, that they've already had those conversations.
Yeah, so, I mean, because that was part of it. It wasn't just these folks, it was the bigger community, right? So I appreciate that.
Every council on government was invited, every PTO was invited, it was a broad range of people.
Yeah, so to get, possibly get more feedback at the next meeting about what they think about that might be helpful, because they were representing back.
Definitely capturing these stories, these, these conversations somehow is going to be, is going to be critical, I think.
Was there discussion about infrastructure being on it, or not being on it, like windows, floors, that kind of thing? Was there a discussion about that?
Initially, I feel like there was some frustration, that they were wondering why that was on these list of projects, and why those things wouldn't have been covered out of the facilities budget. There was some frustration on, as a beginning.
Was there feedback from the constituents in their groups then, or is it hard to say?
It's hard to say.
So, the referendum advisory committee is meeting again on, I should note, the...
July twenty-fifth.
July twenty-fifth, so I guess maybe, maybe we should go with the timeline and look where, look where we are with the timeline, so we can see, we're not expecting any decisions tonight, or, but let's look at what is next.
Thank you.
Thank you, Margot, and thank you, Tom.
I think we go over that.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
I'll transition. Next steps. Okay, so, next steps. So tonight, the board received the community engagement phase three report, the referendum advisory committee recommendation, and also this evening begins discussions of a potential final plan. June eighteenth is our next board, our next board meeting. At that meeting, the board will continue deliberations around that final plan. July twenty-third is our only board meeting in the month of July, and that's, that's where the board will provide the final guidance on a final plan. If proceeding to the referendum, the district begins drafting ballot question for the August board vote. As referenced earlier, we do have one more referendum advisory committee meeting, and that's on July twenty-fifth. And at that meeting, we'll begin talking about messaging, and some of the things that were discussed tonight about, you know, how do we, how do we now move to that education? We've been in community engagement, how do we move to education based upon that final plan? Which could include things like video, video walkthroughs, et cetera, but that will be discussed. And we'll also talk to the referendum advisory committee about those individuals who may want to support the work around education moving forward. want to support the work around education moving forward. So that will happen on that July 25th date. And of course, if there's further feedback from the board regarding that final plan, we'll be able to share that with referendum advisory committee on that, on July 25th. August 13th is, that's when the board will vote on the ballot question if proceeding to the November, November referendum. So some significant work, we've identified really three board meetings, and then we also had the referendum advisory committee on July 25th. So that's it in a nutshell. Now, there's a lot of work and a lot of discussion that will still happen, you know, within the next couple of months, over the course of the summer. But, but I, again, I want to thank Colin and E.O. Sullivan for the work that they've done. I want to thank Tom, Margot, and Lauren, and the entire referendum advisory committee for the work that's been done. It's really been significant, and I'll reiterate also what Colin said, is just the level of engagement and, and our community is so significant, welcomed. And from the outset of this, we wanted to ensure that this was a transparent process, that we valued all voices. And, and from that perspective, I believe we accomplished that.
Thanks, John. You know, there's two deliverables that kind of overlap with this work from our prior meeting, right? We talked about getting an update on our overall capital projects and timeline and allocations. Dave and Sarah and team are working on that. So that's part of this process as well, and I think we're doing that at which, which meeting, remind me?
We're going to do our best to try and provide some level of information at our July meeting.
Okay.
Which is a little earlier than what we were planning. We're going to do our best to do that.
Thank you. So that's deliverable one, and then...
The most awesome.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I know. So that's deliverable one. Then deliverable two was also coming back with some updates and information and recommendations from our administrative team on the bill $220. So it's two, there's two additional pieces. This is absolutely the process that, these are the meetings we have, this is the work that needs to occur over the next two months. But then also, remember, you're going to get some supplemental information in July and August as well.
Which could impact what we're going to ask you for.
It could. So we are, we are working very hard to try to get to a point where really, the board has all of that information to, to consider.
And I think there were some great questions that we, follow-up questions we might, we want to take back to the referendum advisory committee.
Yep.
I mean, so we've got, I was thinking that that was before the July 23rd meeting, but now I see that. Thank you for this beautiful timeline. So we've got two meetings where we might want to come back and ask some further questions before we take our final vote here on August 13th. And I think we'll have a lot more information by then as well, as you just pointed out. Even summer projects, I know I'm getting ahead of agenda years on, is on the July, June 18th meeting, so have a lot of discussion about all in the same area. Just thank you all very, very much.
Very exciting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very, 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 very much appreciated. Okay, anything else on this referendum topic?
Thank you.
Thank you all very, very much.
Thank you.
Next up is agenda items for June 18th, which I just mentioned, where we're definitely going to have another referendum discussion, as well as talk about summer projects.
So can I ask, what, what's going to happen with the referendum discussion? Are we just ultimately going to kind of throw out our ideas? Or, I mean, what, how is that going to be structured?
Well...
I'm just wondering.
Past boards have structured those conversations differently. So I anticipated that Sandra and I would have some conversations about how to structure that, because typically, board president has come up with a, a method of sharing information or asking for information outside the meetings, and then reviewing information at the table. There's, there's a lot of different ways for us to work through this. So I anticipate that's going to be probably the next step, is really considering with the two meetings that we have coming up, how should the board structure the conversations administratively? We're happy to help and provide any additional information or any, any assistance that we can provide, but that's probably likely the next step.
Okay. So I would say if, if anybody has, you know, strong opinions as you reflect on tonight, and to let me know what those are, that would be very good. The other thing I think we were also going to do on June 18th was talk about, maybe it's part of the summer projects budget, maybe that's what that means. Maybe we're not, I thought maybe we were talking about specific summer projects, but I think we're really talking about that 3.3 to 6.1 million, right?
Yep.
So know, Board, that that, that is part of that discussion as well. How do we get there? How do we start to talk about getting there? Which might impact, right, the, the level of option two or option, I'll call it 2.5, right, that sweet spot. So keep that in mind as well. Okay. Anything else on this topic? I'll be anxious to hear from you guys. Okay, so the board does need to go back into closed session for a few moments, so we don't anticipate coming back, no any further discussion or further action. But Board, if you're willing, we would go back into closed for fifteen, twenty minutes, okay?
Okay.
And then we adjourn. So thank you very much.